Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's council workshop. You have something? Thank you. As we get ready to start our special meeting and discuss the budget, let the record show that all council members are present. Can I please get a motion in a second to approve the agenda? Councilmember Boyd?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Solomon?
Second.
Thank you both. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No? Motion carries seven to zero. We will now have the citizen comments. Citizens, you have four minutes to speak. Council, you have one minute if you choose to respond with a statement. We will have Melissa Brown. Good afternoon. You have four minutes.
Sorry, give me one second. I was not expecting to go first. Last week, I had come up to talk about the contract that we were entering into for a third-party tax administration system. And I want to admit that I was partially wrong, partially right. The city manager had mentioned that in this budget is coming out of the HOT fund. However, in accordance with Texas Tax Code, Section 351.1012, electronic tax administration system, notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, a municipality may spend each year not more than the lesser of 1% or $75,000 of the revenue derived from the taxes authorized by this chapter during that year for the creation, maintenance, operation, and administration of an electronic tax administration system. Municipality may not use revenue of the municipality that the municipality is authorized to spend under this section to conduct an audit. So what this is saying is, yes, we may contract with a third party to assist in it. But the $134,000 contract that we entered into, we cannot fund the entirety of it out of the HOT fund, even if we go based on the projection for next year, which is just over $3 million in revenue coming in, that would cap us at $30,000. That has to include both the contract for the STRs and the hotel motels. And we already have a separate contract for the tax administration on. So I did want to say that I was wrong in the fact that, yes, we can use at least a portion of it, we just can't use that full amount for the contract. I also want to go into the facts that we have added the positions of an accounting technician, which, from what I've read, appears to be a data entry person, a park planner, and five paralegals, added five paralegals. We removed a emergency management senior specialist. We have moved the mowing division. And through these decisions, there are positions that were created that outranked, apparently, and were more important than, I don't know, the fire inspectors that are required to do the inspections on the short-term rentals for the ordinance passed by this city council. Then the $30,000 that was requested for emergency management for a warming center. The $5,000, $5,000, that's all that was asked for, for emergency housing that would work with the HOT team, and that was denied. I am sure that we can find $5,000 and $30,000 somewhere in the budget to take care of the people that everybody up here has said, "We want to take care of." That's not counting the fire staff, the police staff that haven't been hired. In fact, there was a prioritized singular new code enforcement officer, one of two, that would be specifically designated just for the historic overlay district. We already pay for one code enforcement officer out of CDBG that is assigned specifically to the North Colleen Redevelopment Zone, or Reinvestment Zone, which includes the historic overlay. But we prioritize over everything else for needed services for the entire city. That's what gets prioritized. So my question is, where are the priorities in this budget? Also, how are we going to fix the fact that we cannot legally pay for the entirety of both of those contracts out of the HOT fund?
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Gary Perser. Sir, you have four minutes. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I passed out, I want to talk about the fees that we're all discussing. And so I had gentlemen do this for me, and I'm assuming that it is accurate, but I have not verified it, but I think we're probably going to be all right with it. But I passed out something, or had something passed out to y'all, to where it shows y'all the fees that y'all are implementing compared to our surrounding cities. I did check in Temple, so I know that's right. Right now, y'all are trying to implement a $25 per lot fee for a preliminary plat and a $25 lot fee for a final plat. That's $50 a lot. Temple gets $3 for preliminary and $3 for final. So they're getting, that's eight times what Temple's getting. And if you go through here, and I just had a comparison of the last two subdivisions that I've done, one of them being Levi Crosson and one of them being Mitchell Farms. And I had them highlight this for me, to where I could quickly go through it with y'all. But you can see on the first page, Mitchell Farms, Clean's proposed fees would be $30,000 and $50,000, I'm rounding them off, $50,000 for Levi Crosson. And if you go over to Waco, those same fees would have been $2,400 and $3,600. Copper's Cove would have been $5,000 and $11,000. And then if you go over to Belton, they would have been $3,000 and $7,000. Temple, $1,500, and Temple, $3,100. That's quite a difference between $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, and $30,000 and $50,000. I have been opposed to the fees from day one. Fees are okay, but they need to be in line. If our neighboring cities are doing $3, I don't think we need $25 for the fees. So I would appreciate y'all look this over and consider it. That is our competition. You're in competition with your surrounding cities. We're not in competition with Lubbock. We're not in competition with Fresno and all these other cities that I keep hearing about. So, you know, you've got to get things in order. And the fees are out of line. They need to be looked at, and they need to be compatible, because the difference between $50,000 and $7,000 is a lot of money. And I want to remind y'all that the consumer will be paying the fees. We all know that, right? Whoever buys a house, it's going to be paying the fees. So I would appreciate y'all looking that over and taking your time and figuring out where we need to go with it. And I want y'all to understand, too, that the paper quoted gentleman sitting up on the dice about the developer circumvented paying their fees. We didn't circumvent anything, and I don't know if the paper quoted him right or misquoted him. I have no idea. I did not hear him say it. But when I get a final for a subdivision, I come to the city, and they give me a final for my water, and I've got to do a pressure test on it, I've got to do a back tea test, which is a purity test, I've got to vacuum test the manholes, I've got to, what else we got to do? A whole bunch of stuff. And y'all give me a final. Nobody knew about these fees. So y'all are the ones that control that. Y'all give me a final after I do everything that y'all require, and nobody knew about these fees. So I don't think we circumvented anything, even when we went to pay them.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez?
Wait a minute, I want to ask for a minute.
All in favor of him getting an extra minute? Raise your hand, please. One, two, oh, there are four right there. Four to three. One minute, sir.
Okay. The fees, we came to pay the fees. And I didn't come personally, but a gentleman that works with me came. He went to a department, they sent him to a different department. They knew nothing of the fees. So it was against my will for him to even come pay them till we talked about them. So we did not circumvent anything. And again, we have to get all the tests, from purity test to pressure test to vacuum test on the sewer line, pull mandrels through the sewer line, and then y'all issue me a final. And Mr. Alvarez is familiar with this process, and we get a final. So I don't like the blame coming to developers that we circumvented anything. We pay what we're supposed to pay if we know about it. And I would appreciate if that gets corrected a little bit. I'm finished.
Councilmember Alvarez? Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure why we're still talking about these fees. I thought we were all in agreements, and we voted on Councilmember Segarra's suggestion to half the increase. So I thought we were past this. We had representatives from the development community sitting here at the meeting, and we clarified that the language was not per inspection and not per acre. So I thought we were past all this. So I'm surprised to hear us still talking about this. I did want to take a chance to clarify what the gentleman stated. I've also read this kind of misinformation in the Colleen Daily Herald where it says that the developers have unpaid fees and the city should collect on these unpaid fees. My take is on it is, if the city messed up and we didn't collect these fees at the time they should have been collected?
Councilmember Alvarez, your time is up. Count Mayor Protim, you come up next. Do you yield your time to Councilmember Alvarez? So you have 30 seconds.
If we failed to collect them, they're not unpaid, we failed to collect them. I don't think it's fair to go back and say, "Hey, look, on your trash bill, on your water bill, we forgot to charge you for a trash can for the last three years, so now I'm going to charge you three years' worth of trash can fees. That was our mess-up. We're eating it. So starting from the implementation of these fees moving forward, they will be collected." But to go back because we failed to collect it, I don't think that's anybody else's fault except our own.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Segarra, you have one minute.
Thank you, Mayor. And we're okay to be talking about this because it's part of the budget, right?
It is part of, it is, you can talk about it, it's part of the budget.
And I appreciate Ramon Alvarez, because I want to just clarify, what we've done is we've doubled the fees. You know, it sounds like, you know, we need to correct it. It sounds like the media has their own perspective. You know, they're attacking everybody up here. And it's like, you know, we have, our job is to take care of the consumer. And again, I keep repeating what I said. I don't think anything has been reported. And what I've said is, I don't care about the developers. My job is to care about the taxpayer. And my concern is that those taxpayers' values are going to go up if a developer, as he explained, goes somewhere else. That's going to create a shortage, which we already have, and we've been dealing with that with Fort Cabasos for the last couple of years. And it's a major concern, but that aspect doesn't get reported. It's all about how bad we are because we're in bed with the developers. And I just want to clarify that the fees have been doubled, the fees have not cut in half as they seem to describe them, because they have their angle there. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Did you change it? Okay, anyone else before we move on? Thank you, council, for your comments, and thank you, residents, for participating in our citizen comments. Madam Secretary, public hearing.
PH 23049, hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024 annual budget.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Mrs. Joy.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So this is the presentation for the FY '24 budget public hearing. We'll start with the schedule of what we've been through so far. So the budget was delivered on July 11th. We held our first budget public hearing on August 1st and set the preliminary tax rate. Held a town hall on August 17th. And then today is the second budget public hearing. Next Tuesday, September 12th, will be the tax rate public hearing and then the adoption of the budget and the tax rate. So for an overview of the FY '24 budget, the total budget's $243.9 million, and this is a 7.99% decrease over the prior year, with the most significant decrease of that being because of the capital expenditures were reduced from the prior year. FY '23 included the bond and CIP projects. The general fund was a 6.8% increase. The water and sewer fund was a 6.84% increase, and solid waste was 4.81% increase. So for the general fund, this will go over the changes that have been made since the budget was proposed on July 11th. We went over these same changes on August 15th and then again at the town hall. So we had the addition of property tax of $229,529. And this was a shift of debt service due to the 2023 CO interest rates coming in lower. And this allowed us to be able to fund the $225,000 for the fire department fit-for-duty physicals that includes cancer screenings. Then also, on August 8th, city council made a motion of direction to reduce the developer fees by half, and that reduced the revenue by $31,625. And then in addition, we have $15,000 being added for legal expenses. This is for requests for attorney general opinions. We found out about this after the budget was proposed, that we would need to submit those through the portal. That is now a requirement by new legislation. And the net is being offset by interest income. And as you can see, the revenues and the expenses are balanced. For the debt service fund, there's a reduction in the property tax, and then there is a reduction in the debt service, and this is again because the interest rates come in lower for the 2023 CO issue that was approved on July 11th, the same day that the budget was proposed. For the hotel occupancy tax fund, there was the addition of the short-term rental inspections to fund the $30,000 of inspections for the month of October to encourage registration. And then the addition of the RV park upgrades for the CIP. This would all come out of additional fund balance, making that total expenditure $4.3 million. But that would leave the fund balance in that fund would still be $1.16 million, which is 26.78%, and the financial governance policy requires 18% to 22%. So this is still in excess of the 22%. For the tax increment, Reinvestment Zone Fund, there was a reduction in the property tax revenue. And this was because of the preliminary values and the certified values, there was a reduction in the value by the ARB. And then in addition, the taxing entities lowered their tax rates, with the most recent being the CTC on August 15th. So that was a change. Also, the interest income was included in this number in the previous August 15th slide. And then on the street scape design, there would be an addition of $22,000 to the project that's already included in the '24 budget, making that a total of $300,000 for that project. And then an additional $100,000 for an expanded improvement grants project, and that would be a total of $2.4 million. And the revenues would be $1.3 million. This fund has $1.16 in, excuse me, $1.3 in fund balance, and the TERS board approved this budget on August 28th. This would be the historic overlay district. And then this is the financial forecast to show that with the use of fund balance, there would still be funds remaining. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, do anyone have any questions? Public hearing is open. Mr. Fornino, you have four minutes.
I put in for a public comment on this prior to all this, but here we are. I think there's an engineer or builder, too, in the audience that could probably back me up when I say this. Don't build on a rocky or unstable foundation. That's what this budget is. And I've said before that I don't have the acumen to describe exact line items and everything else. But when we're talking about developer fees, okay, Mr. Alvarez claims that he doesn't know why we're still talking about it. Well, we don't have a firm resolution on it, that's why. Simply doing a drive-by glance at it and saying, "Oh, well, just move on." That doesn't wash. There was a poll in the paper over the weekend that, granted, not a scientific poll, but a lot more scientific than anything the city puts out on the website, because it tracks the IP and you can generally only vote once. And it was the high 80% that most people were calling for an audit on the fees and all of that, an internal audit. And I see Mr. Segarra grinning when I mention the word "audit." His head almost snaps off, his shoulders shaking, "No, no, no, no," which I say that's all the more reason to conduct one. A forensic audit, not just on this, and not an internal one. I'm sorry, when it comes to an internal audit, I would no more trust an alcoholic to do inventory on a liquor store as I would at this point have anybody internally to audit the city, when we don't know how much money we're supposed to have, how much we were supposed to collect, and if there's any still due. Mr. Perser makes a very good point. Believing him, saying that he's paid all the fees that he was made aware of, okay, well, if the city's not aware of, okay, that comes down to city management. And every time we ask the question of city management and the city manager, we get the same response, the same aloof attitude over it. Well, we'll have to ask members of staff, and they'll answer the question if they feel like it. That doesn't wash. I'm not paying for this. So in the absence of firm accounting on any fees of any kind, rather than raise my fees as a private citizen to make up for any shortcomings, let's have a forensic audit of the entire budget. I'm sick and tired of this, as are a lot of other people. The managerial audit, as I've stated before in the past, has been reported. Most of the recommendations in there were not implemented. They're certainly not implemented now. I and many other citizens would like to know exactly what you're doing with our money, where it's coming from, where it's going, and what it's being spent on. Last time I brought this up, just alone on the Petco grants and donation, Mr. Kegel is on record for not spending the money on what it was supposed to go to. I mean, what's the standard? Please tell me. I mean, how many misappropriations of funds or misspelling or misspending of funds if just on one thing? I mean, if this were a child, "Mom, Dad, I want more allowance. What'd you do with your allowance from last week? I can't tell you." "Okay, well, here's more money." That doesn't work in the real world, and it's not going to work here. We, as citizens, are owed an honest answer. We ask a question when it comes to our money, public money. The city doesn't have money. You have our money. And if we ask a question where it is, whether you feel it's important or not, whether it's animal services, street services, or any other department, we should get a cogent, clear, precise, concise, and accurate answer from Mr. Kegel, which we are yet to get. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else that did not sign up for public hearing, wanted the opportunity to speak, please feel free now? Public hearing closed. Mr. Perser, I had hit the gavel. Okay, yes, sir. So let me explain, because maybe I got it wrong. Mr. Kegel, Madam Secretary, I have four, and Mr. Fornino is going to ask that question concerning what you said about comments. I have four forms that's filled out, and I was told that it's for the next meeting. So I do not have any form other than the items that's on yours. Mr. Fornino is for next meeting. Brown, yours is for next meeting. For Adams, I don't have it. So if you...
Adam, Mayor, I did provide you the forms. I put "special meeting" at the top, "public hearing."
If you would like to speak, public hearing open. Mr. Perser, you can go fill out a form, you can come right behind her. I just opened it back up. And if anyone else would like to speak, please do it now, because the budget is very important, and we do want your input. Regardless of your comments, the council wants to hear. Your four minutes starts... Madam Secretary, whenever you ready. And Mr. Perser, if you would like to speak after her, I can just write "public hearing" on your form that I already have. Okay, you're welcome, sir. And if anyone else, please do it now. You have four minutes.
Thank you. We just heard that the budget includes multiple fund balances that are over 22% even after the spending. According to our financial governance policies, we should not be starting the year off with anything over 22% in fund balance budgeted. The financial governance policy says anything over 22% should be automatically moved over to the CIP for a corresponding fund, for whichever one that is. So for the hotel occupancy, we shouldn't have a 23% projected beginning fund balance. It should always max at 22 at the beginning. That way, we can afford the CIPs that we're paying for. Speaking of the CIPs, it's something that I've only heard mentioned one time throughout this entire process, and it hasn't really gone into much detail, there's been many questions about it. But when you're talking about a budget as large as ours, it's hard to get to everything, right? Part of what we're doing is ADA compliance, including in our city parks. So my question is, will that include having the restrooms actually be accessible? Since we went to the automated timers for the locks on those doors, they're heavy metal grated doors that stay closed all the time. grated doors that stay closed all the time, and it is very difficult to open them either from the outside or the inside. Anyone elderly, anybody with mobility issues, or children would have a hard time either getting in or out of those bathrooms. So will that be addressed in this, and what is that plan? I would also love to know why we have CIPs that are budgeted to come out of contingency. Contingency isn't supposed to be something that we use to budget for a brand-new program or project. Contingency is supposed to be there in case we go over budget on a scheduled project. We don't take that contingency money and then just move it to something new. If it isn't used on the project it was originally assigned to, it goes back into the fund balance. That's the way the budget should be working. There is another CIP for drainage to go along with street reconstruction, but it doesn't list what streets the drainage will be done on. We have about 10 different drainage projects that have been on our CIP list for years, and we are bypassing those to make sure that we're prioritizing drainage on the reconstructed streets. I understand it's important to get those correct the first time, but if we have to divide it up to something a little bit different and work a little bit out of time on each one, the safety of those people in those other areas where we need that drainage improvement is still important. I keep going back to this park planner thing because it kind of bothers me. We have $0 in the 2024 CIP budget for new park creation, zero. We have $173,340 in rec services that will go to the golf course for bunkers and tees, but we have nothing for new parks that is currently budgeting. So if we don't have anything budgeted for it, why do we need a planner for it? I would still love to get some of my answers from, from my previous statements, and then I would really like the answers to these ones especially. Are we going to make sure that our AD, our bathrooms are ADA accessible, people can get in and out of them? And why are we carrying fund balances over 22% into the new year? Why are they not being put in CIP? Are we putting them there just as a cushion so that we can do other different projects or have other contracts come up? If that's the case, that should be scheduled.
Mr. Perser, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to clarify something, where we can make sure I understand it, and if I don't, I need correcting, but I would like for the, the paper to pay attention to this too, if you would. We, we talk about Mrs. Segaro, talked about cutting the fees in half. That was the proposed fees. He didn't, he's not saying cut the existing fees in half. I think, unless I misunderstood, so I want that straight, and I want the paper to report that straight too. He didn't say cut the fees in half. He said cut the proposed fees in half. I think the fees are too high to start with when I can show y'all that the other cities are getting $3 per lot, and we're getting proposed $25 per lot. So I don't even agree with Mr. Segaro, but that's his position, and that's, that's fine. There's going to be seven of y'all decide that. But I want to make sure it gets reported right, that it's the cut, the proposed fees in half, which still is an increase on the existing fees. So we need to make sure that that gets out like it was. And if I'm wrong, then somebody needs to correct me, but it's not cut our fees in half. It's cut the proposed fees, which is an increase to what we're paying today. So that's important. It's important to me, and I think it's important to all of us. And I don't, I see all, the paper has caused lots of problems, and each one of y'all.
Mr. Perser, the budget, we're discussing the budget item.
Well, this is a budget item.
Well, just, what's on the budget, please?
Okay. Every one of y'all have a job. We all have a job, right? And y'all, y'all are not connected to me. Y'all are up there for the citizens of Colleen, and there's seven of y'all that will make a decision on the budget as well as everything else. And it needs to be reported right, and that's all I'm saying. And I, I do want to make sure that it's still an increase, but the increase was reduced, and that's up to how y'all vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If anyone else came in and would like to speak on the budget, this is public hearing. Please fill out your form. Ms. Anka. Good evening, and thank you for your patience. You have four minutes, ma'am. Budget item.
Thank you, council members, Madam Mayor. So I, I too didn't realize we're going to be able to speak on the increase in fees, and until today, I had no idea how our fees compared to the cities around us. I, I can't believe it's 25, I know it was $25 per lot here in Colleen. I had no idea there were $3 per lot, somewhere close to, I don't remember which one he, he mentioned. That is a huge difference, and it makes a big difference in the affordability of homes. And I do agree with Mr. Alvarez that if the developers were not informed of the fees, it's not their fault. I really don't have much more to say other than I agree with pretty much everything that was said, and I, I still can't believe that the fees are so much higher than the surrounding cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Segaro.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, and just for clarification, what I said earlier was, we are doubling the fee. It's gone from 5,000 to 10,000. That's a double, but the expectation, you know, the budget was tripling. And so I said, we're still doubling the fees. We're not cutting them in half. It's gone from five to 10, and so I just want to make that clear. But I had a question earlier because we had the first person that commented about the audit, and I just want to make sure that people understand, we've had conversations about audits up here, but in, in that conversation, there's two types of audits. And one of them that I was asked, and I think that the newspaper asked me a question for, was the internal audit, and that's what Mr. Grady right there. We do a lot of those.
Councilmember Segaro, it's the budget. Even though a resident brought up the audit, it's not agenda item. The agenda item, regardless if they bring it up, the residents.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for pointing that out.
Yes, sir. The city attorney pointed that out to me.
Okay.
So if it's not the agenda item. Okay, Councilmember Alvarez. Oh, are you finished, sir? Okay, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think that a lot of this stuff gets lost in translation. We talk about fees going up, down, sideways, backwards, unpaid, paid, but I think it needs to be further reiterated. What Councilmember Segaro said is that the fees for developers and builders are going up. What we proposed was to halve the proposed increase amount, not half the fees, so they're not getting a discount. The fees are still going up. We proposed to halve the proposed increase of those fees. So they were, some of them were going to go up by 10,000, some of them were going to go up by 5,000. What we did is we took those proposed increases and we halved them. So they're still going up, but instead of going up by 100%, they're going up by 50%, 25%, whatever that percentage is. We halved the proposed increase. I think that that needs to be said correctly because there is a lot of misinformation surrounding these fees, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we confirm this over to the 22%? And can you explain why, if that's the case?
Well, the hotel motel's a special revenue fund, but just assume it wasn't.
I mean, and the other, other funds that we got to stay.
Right, that's where I was headed. When we do the audit at the end of the fiscal year, that money does go, the money over 22% does go. It doesn't say you don't budget it because that, the year we're taking a fund balance forward, we don't know exactly what it is yet. When it's audited, it gets taken care of every single year.
Okay, so right now, we don't have anything that's just crossing over, that's over 22%?
Oh, there, there may be some that, that in the budget, it shows 22%, but the, the one that was brought up was a special revenue fund, and it's, so I don't think it really applies, but just assume it did. When, when the audit is done and we know how much exactly is over fund balance, it'll get transferred.
Thank you.
I think that process has been in for a while. Direction of the council. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Mr. Kegel, there was a question that was asked regarding the ADA, and it's my understanding that there's, all of the items that are required by law for ADA will be addressed eventually during that process, but the specific question was asked regarding the restrooms and accessibility to those doors. Do you, do we have any information on that?
Well, that, that's one person's opinion that they're not ADA compliant. I don't know if that's accurate or not.
But the city will address all ADA issues as they're related, as per the DOG, as per DOJ, I'm sorry, and as per the standard, correct?
Yes, ma'am, as we can. There is a massive backlog that will not be addressed in just one year, but over time, yes, ma'am, we have to.
And then also, sir, I do have a question. The question was asked about an audit, internal versus forensic. So I was just curious as to, in, in this particular circumstance, just for clarity, how would the city benefit from an internal audit versus an external audit as it related to internal processes? Like, would there be a benefit of an internal audit as it relates to that, or is there something that you would recommend? And how, how would we benefit from that?
If you're just asking my opinion, I think it's, it's a great task for our auditor, the internal auditor, to look at that. A forensic audit is when there's.
Mr. Kegel and Councilwoman Gonzalez, it has to be budgeted, the numbers that was presented by Mrs. Drake. If it's anything that Mrs. Drake presented to the public that's on our agenda, we can discuss it. She did not mention the audit.
So my question, I guess, then, if I'm out of line there, then relates to the fees and the question regarding those. So if we're asking if there was an error, there seems to be that misconception or that error that there was, that if, would that be recommended, and can we, would an internal be recommended for that?
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Mayor Broughton.
Madam Mayor, I move, and I would like to make a motion, that we set the date of September the 12th, 2023, to adopt the FY 2024 proposed budget at which the meeting was started by here in our chambers.
Thank you. Can I get a second to that motion? Councilmember Adams.
I have speaking on another one, on another motion.
Well, sir, each council member get one minute to either do a statement or a comment.
This was a public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to read it again. The citizen comments, and we get three minutes each. So you, if you, you second that motion?
No.
Okay, so, okay, you can't even talk about it. Councilmember Solomon, thank you. Do you have anything you want to say, Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I did. I, I had actually had a question about, because we had made a commitment to support the warming and cooling station, and if we have, I sort of, we had moved 15,000, can we move 5,000? Is it $5,000 available to cover that?
Well, I, I mean, I'm not for sure I'm completely understanding.
And I can talk, because we're not approving the budget until there, so I can, with Florida, and I can come to you afterwards.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero, and I also want to agree with Councilmember Adams. If y'all, council, have any concerns or questions, please make sure that you send them in advance to the staff or Mr. Kegel or the finance department. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
A second.
We have a first, a motion by Councilmember Alvarez, and we have a second by Councilmember Adams. All in favor, yes. Meeting adjourned. We will start back up with our workshop in 10 minutes.